Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Board meeting of October 6, 2015, to order. The first item on the agenda is minutes from September 29. Do we have anything?
Yeah, there's one correction. I recommend approval of the minutes as corrected for September 29, 2015.
Well, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. The second item on the agenda is a decision. Any approval not required, plans? There is none. I didn't see any. Thanks for pointing that out, though, just in case I missed it. The next item is a decision. The applicant is Kit Wallenhop Preliminary Plan for a Proposed Subdivision Consisting of Two Lots Located at 771 West Falmouth Highway, Falmouth Engineering. Does anyone? Ken, would you read the motion?
October 1, 2015 draft. Motion that the Planning Board vote the following recommendations to address the issues raised under the subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth. Article III, Preliminary Plans for a Plan Entitled "Preliminary Plan Prepared for Kit Wallenhop in Falmouth Prepared by Falmouth Engineering Dated July 7, 2015." Scale as shown. One, a list of waivers from the Planning Board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two, the applicant shall limit the disturbance to any stone walls to accommodate driveways. The applicant should obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Districts Commission prior to opening any stone walls, if any. Three, the applicant is strongly encouraged to proceed with the no road cluster definitive special permit option. The Planning Board does not encourage the applicant to further develop the traditional grid plan laying out the proposed way. The property to the north, shown as parcel B, owned now or formerly by Louis Larry, was the subject of a preliminary plan decision of the board that advised the same no road option. The applicant is directed to that decision dated February 25, 2015, and may want to consider a joint or combined application. Four, the site is in the West Falmouth Coastal Pond Overlay District. Although not a requirement, the applicant is encouraged to consider the installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
No discussion.
Discussion, please. Yes. Do you all have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. The next is a decision. The applicant is FWG LLC Preliminary Plan for Proposed Planned Residential Development Consisting of Thirty-three Units of Multi-Family Housing Located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road, Holmes &amp; McGrath, filed July 23, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a question if we close the hearing or not. We're trying to remember if we close that.
We're looking it up, but you can always put a motion on the floor.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move that the Planning Board vote the following recommendations to address the issues raised under the subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth. Article III, preliminary plans for a plan entitled "Preliminary Plan Prepared for Avalon Consulting in Falmouth Prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, Inc., Dated July 22, 2015," revised 9/11/2015, scale one inch equals 150 feet, four sheets. One, a list of waivers from the Planning Board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two, the site is located in the Wild Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District. Therefore, the definitive plan application must include an analysis of development impact pursuant to Article 21 of the zoning bylaw. The applicant is advised to review private sewage treatment facilities with the wastewater superintendent and board of health prior to definitive plan submittal. Three, the preliminary plan depicts a one-way circulation pattern for the proposed Road A. The Planning Board is disinclined to approve this concept, given the number of lots. A standard subdivision road within the proposed 30-foot layout is preferred. Four, the plan depicts sewer, water, telephone, and power utilities utilizing the open space and an easement over lots six and seven. To the extent practicable, all utilities should remain in the road layouts. Five, the grouping of lots should not exceed five. A reconfiguration of lots 1 through 16 is necessary. Six, the applicant's attention is directed to the water superintendent's referral dated August 11, 2015, where fire flow, water pressure, is raised as an issue. Demonstration of adequate fire flow at the time of definitive plan application is necessary. Seven, the Planning Board is concerned about the proximity of the subdivision lots to the proposed fairway number one. The applicant needs to demonstrate that adequate safeguards are in place to protect prospective lot owners and their property. Eight, the proposed configuration of open space is a concern to the board. The open space as proposed is isolated, fragmented, not contiguous, and of little or no practical use to the owners of the lots in the subdivision. The applicant is advised to consolidate the open space into a more practical configuration in keeping with past Planning Board decisions under the Planned Residential Development bylaw. A consideration of off-site open space can be considered by the board.
I'll second.
Is there anything new, other than you've already proposed before? Do you have anything new? Does anyone object? We don't give them.
If it's brief.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, for your record, I'm Bob Ahmet, and Kelly Cardoza, a consultant, is here. Mike McGrath, and also tonight David Spiegel is here. He is the owner of this property, and he's invested already a mammoth amount of money in it. The hearing was not closed at the last meeting that we attended, and we were certainly expecting to discuss the plans. I submitted to the board, to Mr. Curry, a lengthy letter on September 25 that addressed a number of the issues that were raised and that there seemed to be questions about. I would be disappointed if the board members haven't all received a copy of that as I asked to be done, so that you could take it all into account. I went into considerable detail about the plans and about the regulations which we think the plans met. The board and the Planning Board staff have been very busy preparing for town meeting, Austin Assistant Town Planner, and so on. It seems to be difficult to really engage the board and discuss some of these details. This is a very important project. It's very important to the 300 residents of Valley Me. We think we've significantly improved the plan based on what the Planning Board has done to date, and we're prepared to work to improve it more. We appreciate the concerns of the board, but we have a concern that the decision as drafted does not give us the assurances, the direction, that we need as we enter into what's likely to be another nine months of permitting with the Cape Cod Commission and the state, and then coming back to the town. So, for instance, even though we think that the open space complies with your regulation, and I'd like to point out, this is not a new issue. In 1995, Tom Council wrote a letter about the Fairway Point subdivision, which is the condominium area over here. And the town council said that the golf course could be used as open space, and the golf course could have exclusive control of the property if the Planning Board approved it. The fact is, the Planning Board didn't approve it back then. What the Planning Board did approve was open space, big triangle piece between the holes and open space that went all around the golf course. I think it's consistent with what we're proposing. But, having said that, if we need to do off-site open space, we're prepared to do that. The proposed decision doesn't give us some of the information that I think we need to know. That is, that at least you agree with our calculation of the amount of open space required. We think that figure is approximately 22.95 acres, I think it is. And your bylaw says that a third can be the recreational use area, that is golf course under Chapter 61B. So we'd like to be sure that we understand that and know if any of the open space that we've shown on the plan is satisfactory. If, for instance, instead of what you've described as isolated and fragmented, which we think is 104 acres of open space, if we were to take a box, how much would be in that space along with the third that can be golf course?
I asked you particularly, is there anything new that you didn't bring up the last time? Our sons were going over the same things.
Well, I think Mr. Duffy's letter back then is new. Our suggestion of needing information about the amount of open space, the amount that can be, that's required, the amount that can be golf course, whether any of what we're showing can counter, whether we can reconfigure it, which has been suggested in your decision, and how much off-site open space would we need. So we only received this proposed motion, and I'm not sure that the board considered the correspondence we submitted. We only received it on Friday of last week. We're working on ways to respond to the concern. We think it'd be appropriate, given the importance of this, given our need to know what you agree with, what's approved. I mean, we can understand, you don't like the one-way road. We'll change it to two ways. We can do that. The decision suggests within a 30-foot layout. We think we can do it in a 34-foot layout. We can make some further changes to the lots to pull the lot lines away from that first hole now that we see your decision. What I would like to ask the board to do is to not vote the decision that you have in front of you tonight, because it doesn't give us the direction that we think we need. We need to know, we need an approval, if we can get it, subject to conditions. Yes, of course, the water pressure has to be satisfactorily addressed and some other things, but the layout of lots, the amount of open space, those are knowable, and we would like to offer their opportunity to make revisions to the plan. We'd like the opportunity to meet with the town planner in the next week to go over some suggestions, and then be back on your agenda either next week or the week, preferably, I would say, the week after that, and see if we can't address your concerns further, get an approval, conditioned approval, and then go on.
My understanding, this is a preliminary plan, and you can bring it back at any time.
That is true.
Let me finish, just for a second. I thought that we, two of the things you said that we didn't address, I thought item five talked about the lot configuration, and item eight talked about the open space, and we gave you direction on both.
Well, you've given direction. We need to know what's approved, and we need to, so that we can proceed. We need.
I don't know how we can approve it without seeing on the plan.
There you go. That's why we would like.
So you can bring back, I'm saying to you, this is a preliminary plan. You can come back with a new plan right away.
I think it will be so much more efficient for the board to give us a couple. We've given extensions as requested.
I don't have, how much time, Brian? What's our time constraints over here?
Well, we've already extended it to following the next meeting. We would extend it, you know, we're here to work with you.
So you're saying that you haven't had time to address these items that we gave you last Friday, and you need more time? Is that what you're saying?
Well, since we received that on Friday, we've actually talked every day, and Mr. McGrath has already prepared plans, and I didn't want to give you plans tonight, that we're working on to address some of the issues. We know we have to widen the road layout. We're thinking about how to change the open space so that it fits the way you would like to see the open space. We're not arguing with you. We're trying to get an approval here.
I was under the assumption that you could, it would be a preliminary plan, that you could bring it back at any time, and I guess you're saying that that isn't good enough. You want to keep this open and don't want to bring in back a new plan. Is that my, is that what you're asking?
That's true, because the process will be much quicker if we do that. And we're trying to get the plan together.
I was unaware of any reason why it'd be faster or slower, but I don't have a problem with it if the other board members.
We have a motion on the floor, so, I mean, before we, you know, talk about that.
Okay, we should probably finish.
I would like, Mr. Chairman, with your leave and indulgence, and I appreciate it very much, to have Mr. Spiegel say a couple of words about what he's trying to do here. His hearing is open. He's the owner of the property. It'll be great.
Go ahead, Ralph. Go to the right first.
Well, it sounds as though the applicant is asking questions that would be addressed in the, not in the preliminary plan, but in the final plan. So, I mean, preliminary plans don't lock you into anything, so you can make changes and bring those forward in your final plan. I don't quite understand.
Bring back another preliminary plan also.
I don't understand, I don't understand what Mr. Ahmet's trying to.
Ken, do you have anything?
Trying to get at.
I think we've made a decision, or if we vote on this decision, it's a decision. And any decision you make, the board makes the decision, the applicant deals with that decision. They can't try to talk us out of making a decision once we've made a motion, and that's my point about that.
Pat, you had something?
Well, the purpose of a preliminary plan is to allow the board to give direction to the applicant, which I believe is exactly what we are doing here, to come back with a definitive plan. I mean, if the board wants me to, I can withdraw the motion. But I think what Mr. Ahmet is saying as to not enough direction, I believe that this decision gives the kind of direction that we had been in sort of a little back-and-forth here trying to give, and I believe there is nothing in here that isn't in our PRD already for a direction that's been given by that bylaw. I mean, the fact that we're saying divide it into groupings of five, that's in our bylaw. I don't know how we can go around that. This is what we've always done.
Our big concerns are that, you've raised the concern about the proximity of the first hole to the housing. If we were to, we like to do all we can to get you comfortable with that, so you approve it. Otherwise, we go through tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars of design and permitting process, and come back to you and find out that we haven't satisfied you. That is something you can decide now, and we'd like our best shot at you doing so. You have not told us that we have the right amount of open space, and we think that that's important.
We haven't told you, you haven't either. What we have told you is, and we've said it more than once, not just this decision. I clearly remember expressing myself and other people that we weren't in favor of the fragmented land and thought it should be closer, one big chunk, kind of like what you had to do with the last time, and I didn't see any change to that at all. You came back and said, no, this is what we want, and we're saying it's not what we want, and we're saying it to you in writing.
Well, I wonder if the board members have considered the, all of the information and argument that was expressed in the correspondence that I submitted, although frankly, I can read the board, I appreciate where you're coming from. I don't think that anything I put in the letter would change your decision on this. So all I would ask now, if you are not willing to give us leave, to have a couple more weeks to try to address these concerns further, I'd ask that you allow Mr. Spiegel to say a few words, and, you know, we appreciate that you've let me make this presentation.
I'd be agreeable if Pat wanted to withdraw the motion and extend the hearing. I think we could extend that courtesy.
I have no problem with that. Okay, so I hereby withdraw my motion.
Second.
All in favor? We have to vote on withdrawing it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One, two.
Two. It's withdrawn.
I'd like to make sure the board understands that the motion is off the table if I can address the board.
Yes. Well, the other thing is, I want to make sure, I really don't see any difference in extension or just filing a new preliminary plan and coming back again. I think they're one and the same, but. Go ahead, Brian.
A preliminary plan decision, like, well, twelve of the board, it's not binding on you, it's binding on the applicant. Assurances, you can't give them assurances. Things could change. You don't calculate, in this case, on your own conscience. They're asking for things, in my sense, you can't give them. If you want to extend this out another week, I want to make sure they are abundantly clear about what this board votes and what got us there, and what form you've been using now for a couple of years. So the board didn't want to get into reapproval, so we approved that, we gave recommendations, and we come back with a definitive plan, and that's what it brings. So we'll see, I guess, we'll see this again next week. Fit it into your agenda somehow, and we're looking at it. But you're piling up town meeting stuff, and there's a special town meeting, I don't know if it's on the 20th, which is in Port Hurst. I'll put it all the week, and I'll have a discussion with the applicant later, and I'll advise you.
Just to be clear, does anyone have any trouble with the calculations that have been provided us on open space? The applicant seems to be worried that we didn't read this and don't understand it. Does everyone understand this? Have you all looked at this?
I didn't measure it.
I know. I'm just making sure. You brought it up, and you didn't get feedback. I'm trying, I even asked questions about the slope and looked at it, and I was told it fits, that's why it didn't work. Pat?
Okay, they're looking for direction, and so I would have to say that by our bylaw, the open space has to be put in trust. And when you've got little dribs and grabs here and there, everywhere, I don't see how it could possibly be put in trust for the benefit of the residents.
The bylaw has a specific exception for recreational use.
It's our decision. We want you to listen to us now, okay? We just listened to you. We'd like you to listen to us.
Mr. Chair, it's an open meeting. It hasn't been closed, so it's not up to us to discuss it. We have to let them have the floor.
No, I understand.
So we can't make decisions on anything we haven't voted.
We're not making decisions. I want him to listen to what we said. He was telling us what he thought, I was telling.
Mr. Fox, I appreciate that, and I thank you. And I just have one more request for you. And again, I can't tell you how strong I want to express our interest is in complying with the bylaw, getting an approval for a very good project that many people want to see approved, and I thank you for your help on that. I would like you, since you have Mr. Spiegel here, to listen to him for just a moment.
What is the status of the hearing? I need, I need to understand the status of the hearing.
It's a preliminary plan, board, there is no hearing, you have a public meeting.
Okay.
You're alert under your regulations by regularity and some of others, but it's not a hearing.
Okay, that's what I-
It's a preliminary plan, you can have a discussion here and there if you want it.
Right. The, the word hearing has been passed around here tonight and I'm, and I'm not aware of what, what hearing we're talking about.
There's no opening or closing hearings, it's a preliminary.
Okay, fine.
So we, we had a discussion and a decision and we've decided to withdraw any motions on it and the applicants asked for more time?
I will return after motion, and I'll make sure the board understands that interpretations of the bylaw are made by the building commissioner, and if they don't like those interpretations, they can appeal to the board of key, and that your guidance comes from, take nothing. These preliminary plans are supposed to be, they, they can be on tracing, claw, and pencil, they're supposed to be discussions, that's what they're supposed to be, not some sort of binding assurance that you can move forward on design plans in tens of thousands of dollars if you don't have that bill. So I, my recommendation to the board is, it's now approaching seven o'clock and we're making four plans in front of you, is to allow me to schedule some time, rewrite this for you, and hopefully address some of the concerns of the applicant too.
I know, I, I would like, one of the things, in general terms, not specific to this, one of the things that I would like to see and other members have, is when we have an open space, it be contiguous and then that the owners of the land have access to it all the time and not told they can only go there in, in the wintertime when they're cross-country skiing. I found that very difficult. And that was, that is the, my, was my biggest problem with it, was the fragmented open space and the limited access to the property owners. And that was, I thought we had expressed that, we've said it here, and hopefully we'd like to see you address that. Anybody else have any final things?
Yeah, what's the timeframe for coming back?
Next week, we're gonna be jammed up, but we'll do it next week. Yes, Pat?
I think we should ask for an additional extension, just in case you don't think so, Brian. It's done next week, okay?
And again, it's, this is just a preliminary plan, we're gonna come back with a final plan or a new preliminary plan, it's a matter of truth.
If we only have, if we only have the week and, given what I've heard, I'll make a judgment call here, you know, if we're gonna have the same thing next week or if, if Mr. Curry thinks it'd be useful to have the next week and give us more information or I can meet with him and we can just go over some things.
Are you gonna submit the same plan next week?
Well, we really don't want to submit plans at the late minute, Mr. Curry doesn't want to see that, you don't want to see that, I think we could maybe get something in, in the next day or two, but just have a discussion and have some additional information in the, in the motion would help us, but really, I can, I'll read the way people feel about, about this and if, if you feel you need to vote on it, I think that tonight you can do that or do the same thing next week.
Would the board allow us to speak for a minute?
Yes, go ahead. Do you have anything new to add to it or are you just gonna tell us you?
No.
Good. Please step up and introduce yourself, we don't mean to. We were hoping for some new information.
My name's David Spiegel, I'm the owner of the LLC that owns the property and purchased approximately a year ago and we're excited, it's a special piece of property. We've made a huge investment in trying to improve it and to try to make it a better facility for the neighbors, et cetera. And the items that the board has mentioned that they would like to try to see improved, I'm happy to do. So, most of the items, as far as water issues, as far as two-way street and the different items, and I clearly understand the open space, which I didn't because I wasn't at the meeting, so I fully understand where you're coming from, what would be helpful to me, if it's possible, that we have an idea, whether it's 20 acres, 15 acres, 10 acres, how much of the golf course, if it's 30% of the golf course, the open space can be utilized towards the golf course and the balance is X amount of acreage, what we would plan to do is to acquire off property that could be granted and set into a specific trust. So, I just want to thank you very much, I know how much time and energy you've put towards it and the comments that you've come up with, I don't have a problem with, and we want to try to just bring it to fruition. That's all. And if you have any questions for me, please, I'm happy to answer anything.
All right, again, this is just a preliminary plan, we'd love to see some changes you've proposed, see if you can get them done.
We, we will do it right away.
We'd like to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll be back.
Any comments from the audience?
Is this an open hearing?
Not a hearing.
No, it's not a hearing.
Preliminary plan.
It's our discussion.
The applicant can't speak at the town, but I'm just looking.
You haven't been recognized, sir. Next item on the agenda, recommendations for zoning articles, November 10th, 2015, town meeting. Excuse me? Recommendations to zoning articles for November 10th, 2015, town meeting. Again, we are just recommending, we're not going through these. So the first one on is the flood hazard overlay district. Bob, are you prepared to read that?
We have to read it?
We've already, you've actually read it, we've already been through it. Anyone have any problems?
Do you want me to read the whole?
No, I guess it's, it's been, it's been, we read it last time, we've been through it.
Yeah.
I saw it in your hand, I thought you were getting ready to read it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
A motion?
The board's mission tonight is to take a recommendation.
Yeah. So, so it's either, do I hear a recommendation?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, oh, Pat.
I move that we recommend to town meeting the article, the article on the flood hazard overlay district as printed.
Second?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Next item is the rezoning of the former town landfill located at Zero Blacksmith Shop Road.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recommend to town meeting as printed the article for this particular article.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? The next thing is amend chapter 240-13, definition of ground-mounted solar array, photovoltaic array, excuse me. Pat?
I move that we recommend indefinite postponement to town meeting.
I would second that.
Discussion?
The only discussion I have on it is two, it's been reported that it's not in the proper form, and we have a very difficult time moving it forward. And also, it's awfully quick, we usually take a lot of time to review items like this that are far-reaching and affect almost every neighborhood in town, and to do it in one night, I think is, needs some work, so I'd encourage the applicant to bring this back and work it further and correct, get some advice on structuring the, the form of the So, if we're ready to vote, we have, yes Ralph?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know, you made a comment, the fact that it's not in the correct form, would you elaborate on that, please?
Well, I've received, one, our, our town planner has told me the town council has said not in the right form and plus, there's been other legal opinions on it, that it's not the right form. Brian, do you have anything specific?
Right, it doesn't cite the sections that we have changed. It has the same, it doesn't quote to amend chapter 240 zoning of the code down, it just says chapter 240. So it's just not in the right form, and then it goes on above building permits and building inspection and site review, but it doesn't really say where that's going to go or where that would reside and reside by. So it's just not on purpose. And I don't think the board has the ability to bring it forward procedurally. But Jim is also talking about a substantive change and usually the board likes to take its time and usually you ask how many to, we should give you that time and look at it briefly, and if it's a good idea, you can bring back an article that's in form, proper form, and, and force the people.
Ms. Driscoll, who submitted the article, did she ever approach our planning staff as to the correct way to make, put this together?
I got an email two days before the warrant closed, the vice is not allowed to help people draft their petitions.
But the town council can, right? He can help.
He, he might be able to, but not always.
So how would it, how would an applicant be coached to the correct form if you're not allowed to help them?
Get proper legal advice.
Pardon?
Get proper legal advice and wording it properly, I think that's the problem, Ralph, it's not worded properly.
So you're saying that a person needs, needs to hire an attorney to submit a petition article?
If they don't know how to do it themselves, that would be a good idea. I think it's because it's far-reaching, Ralph, this is, this, this is, that's my understanding, this, this affects parcels all over town.
So you think you just want to worry about the form, and we're not substance, the substance, it's a big leap, and the board wants more time to study this, and that's a very reasonable request. So we're not, you think that we're worrying about the form, the board wants a different standpoint.
So we have, we have a motion on the table is for an IP indefinite postponement, do we have a second?
Yes, it was already seconded.
Ready to vote? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, so we've recommended indefinite postponement. So the next item on the agenda is the accessory apartment bylaw.
Ralph, I can just run quickly through the changes made for you.
Yes, yes.
First we'd ping it up on the strikeout version for you. And we added the, in paragraph one, we added the language that Pat longed regards the Lexington model, that you can lease your apartment perhaps for two years, or the other two years, you can see that language in paragraph one. And then we also added the language for you regards to municipal sewer on paragraph four, if you're in a water resource protection district or coastal pond overlay, you'd be a 1,000 square feet unless connected to the municipal sewer system. We left up for you to the discussion you wanted to have, whether you wanted to have the accessory apartments occupied for seven, eight, or nine months. And we left it up for your discussion tonight, whether or not you would like to have this a special permit or a use allowed as a matter of right. I did some research for you, I will question you that, look at a compilation of bylaws that was ten years ago, I'm still working on that, because I checked Toots Berry, I checked with Amper's and some others, and they actually, those towns actually have their bylaw by right now, so we're going to, and then this, you'll notice, it doesn't include any Kit Kaid towns either, this is North Shore, South Shore town. But there are, even ten years ago, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven communities that allow it by right, and then at least two or three others. One community allows it by right if you're in certain zones and by special permit in other zones. And one community allows it by right if you're in the house, it would require a special permit if you are in an accessory plan. So there's some combinations and permutations the board considers, but there is a strength towards allowing these things, accessory apartments to go in as a matter of right in certain, in certain zoning districts. So I guess that would be one of the board's decisions or discussions you could make and want to have, in which direction you want to go in, if you want to go in that direction by right, you may want to consider limiting it perhaps in particular the zone district. Anything else?
I think that was one of the big questions, it was about limiting to a certain area and would we have to define that in the bylaw as it's written?
When you get to limit it to certain zoning districts, couldn't just carve out a particular area, you do that in certain areas of your general residence for offices, that's even frowned upon today.
So if we chose a particular zone, that zone may not be just in one area of town, it could be-
In the past, the board has usually used the general residence district-
Right.
As your, kind of, test cases, when you went from two units to three units by right, you used general residence district because it's only about 1% of the town, 2% of the town. And it's clustered usually near business districts or build at their plants as general residence, general residence or by locus. So when the board wants to move forward cautiously, that's usually your zone of choice.
I believe we brought that up, didn't we, about G I?
I, I myself think we need to, I agree with two things, it, the, the way we have it now, nothing's happened, it's not working. And that's clear, we've proved that, we're not getting them. So I think that having it by right, but I also think we need to be cautious and, and probably limit it to either an overlay district or some, some area that we could get input from other groups on.
You could create an overlay district, that would be more work and more cumbersome, but you could create a-
Or we could do it in general residence, we have a couple options.
Right.
So I, I guess, well, I'd like to live here, if any other, I have something to say, but I'd like to listen to any other board members first, if you had anything else to say on this.
The, the one thing that I'm not too sure about is the by right versus permit.
We understand.
That's, that's a huge, that's a huge concern because the by right, the, the thing that worries me about whenever you do this is our town has a, has a, you only fix things and it's only enforced with complaint-driven. If you have problems and it's a special permit, there's that potential that if they didn't do it right, it could be taken away. Where if it's by right, once it's done, it's done. And that for enforcement purposes, I, I think the special permit might have more weight on that, that's, that's all that I wanted to say about that.
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I have to agree with that, it's obvious that the majority of the towns that do have accessory apartments require a special permit, so I'm, I'm in favor of that, the special permit comes from the zoning board of appeals. And the special, the current bylaw requires that the accessory apartment- And the special, the current bylaw requires that the accessory apartment be affordable. Which, and according to the zoning board of administrators, zoning board of appeals administrator, the majority of the, of the, of the units that are on the, on the books right now, the, the unit is used by a family member. I believe she quoted to me something like 75% of them are used by family members, which there wouldn't be any charge at all. So obviously, it's affordable to those people. But she also mentioned that, that all, all 100 units that they monitor should be on our, on our affordable inventory, and they're not. And that years ago, when most of these, when most of these permits were issued, there was no follow-up on a deed, a deed restriction going into the registry of deeds. So there are, there are a lot of issues with, with this that need to be cleaned up. And I'm not just sure how we can clean them up. She had a couple of recommendations to me, which I would, I would suggest that we ask her, since she's responsible, her, her board is responsible for issuing the permits, and also, they're also monitoring the current permits. I would ask that it should be included in, in testimony as we go forward on this.
Ralph, one of the things that, we're bringing this forward, that we're proposing to change is it doesn't have to be deed restricted. That is the whole essence of, of the recommendation. Or we're just going back to the same bylaw that we had before, which really isn't working. Our, our purpose in bringing this forward is looking at, these items are going to be changes to it that would make it easier, and actually bring them forward, and not have, and take, and actually take away those two requirements you're talking about and removing them from, so that more of them get built, because they're not getting built on the current. So I mean, if you want to disagree with that, that's okay. But if you're actually saying, well, let's not do this, just let's go back to the old bylaw, and we're going to be going around in circles if we do that.
No, I understand that. I understand what you're saying.
Our intention was to send it to them for their comments, it's...
But for someone who's intimately involved with it, with it all the time, I would recommend that we get some testimony from the zoning board of appeals administrator on this, on this revision. She may very well agree with that.
I spoke with her today, and I was going to recommend tonight that this draft go out to other interested parties, that they all have a chance to comment, and we bring it back again. So that we'd listen to not just one person, but other people, and make, what we, what the intent here is to put something on paper to actually start working on, and lay it out. Not to decide on it tonight, or anything like that, but lay it out, put it out there, and send it to everybody. Well, first announce it's in our, they can come get it at any time, but in particular, some of the, send it out to the zoning board of appeals, of course, and any other interested parties, and get their feedback, and have another hearing, and listen to them all. That was the intent. That we are not trying, this is something that's going to be a lot of work, and we're going to have to get input from a lot of people on it. And this is just the first attempt to put some ideas down on paper, to get comments from everybody on. Yes?
I did, I gave a copy of that to Seri today, so she will, she will look it over.
I'm sorry, Brian, I can't hear you.
I did, I did give a copy to Seri today, she'll look it over, and she, she for sure will give us her comments.
Okay. I'm thinking that our entire board would probably want to talk, would want to see it.
I'd like to speak in favor of creating an overlay district. When we talked about this, we were talking about housing in our comprehensive plan group. We were talking about using this as a way to increase density as well. The square footage restriction would, in and of itself, we anticipate, keep the rents lower. Or if it's for family members, obviously, they don't have to charge anything, they can do whatever they want to do on it. But by creating an overlay district, we would be looking at doing it where the town could accept greater density, because it's closer to the amenities in town, it's on sewer, it's always on public water supply. So there are many things to speak in favor of doing an overlay district for a test case, and see how it works in there. And insofar as having it registered as affordable, we are stumbling on state law in that case, because by doing that, you have to give away the rights to your property, in essence, to the state. It has to remain listed as affordable, and that is one huge stumbling block for anybody to want to do this. So I think we'd be advised as a board to look at creating an overlay district, and really look at the map, and what we're dealing with, and where we're closer into town to public transportation, to the amenities.
I agree with what Pat and Jim have been saying. We've had this discussion numerous times on the low comprehensive plan committee, and, and we're trying to make some of these bylaws less onerous. And I'm looking at the not-allowed towns, and I have to laugh, because I have friends and family living in these towns, and I know there's accessory apartments that are there. And I'm sure that in Falmouth, there are plenty as well. I, I look at the special permit as just one more hurdle for people to have to jump over. I said it before, that when someone is pulling a building permit to do something, that the building commissioner is going to be looking at the applicable bylaw, the building code, and all that. So there's, they're going to be under enough restrictions when it comes to that. And if we are doing it in a small area, that we are, if we create an overlay district, I think a lot of these concerns could be allied by that.
Yes, Doug?
I agree with the idea that Pat has with the overlay district. I don't think it's likely that it'll all be on sewer, though. I think that's just the main street.
Conceptually, it's a good idea.
Conceptually, that's, that was concept.
But it's a good idea and good start.
And if they are on a septic system, that's going to limit what size units could be added as well, so.
And it'll affect lot size will, will roll in, too.
Right. And my first thought was, I'd like to get away from the special permit, but Ken has a good point. If it becomes a problem, there's a little more leverage with the special permit. So I'm still undecided on that.
Anybody else?
When we were discussing the owner occupancy, oh.
Yeah, I, I have some questions to form when we finish this discussion. This is important. So if anybody has to add to the, let's finish that concept, and I'll go on to another.
So...
The number of months.
Yeah, that's one of...
Okay, we'll, okay, we'll move on to the owner occupancy for number of months. Obviously, Paul, you ready to talk about that?
Well, I was going to suggest it be the minimum amount of time. I understand the reasons why we have an owner-occupied area, but there's more flexibility if it's a minimum of six or something like that, rather than nine or 12.
Open for discussion? We'll listen to more people? Yes, Doug?
I agree with that. I think seven is long enough. I understand the concern, but I know a lot of older folks that do want to be away for five months, sometimes six. As the winters get longer and they get older, they want to be down south more.
You know, we are a scientific community, and we have an older community, and people go to Florida for four to six months anyway. So I think this should be as minimal as we would like to make it, and still have the, the intent of someone being in the property for most of the time.
I think the important part is it has to be owner-occupied.
Right.
That they cannot turn this into a two-family investment property and not live there. That's not the intent.
I think the idea with the seven months is that you're more a resident here than you are there. So I, I actually think the seven months is good.
That's a tax issue.
Yeah, if you're, if you're, if it's not seven months, you're not a legal resident in the state, so.
It's a tax issue.
Yeah. I'd be amenable to seven months. I think that's adequate.
Yes, Ken?
I had, you know, concerns about that. If, if it's controlled where it is, and it's an overlay district, you know, and if there is permitting, a special permit, that would change the whole amount, because there'd be more control if somebody decided to move. So, so I would agree with the seven months, if, since we're looking at it differently, not just wholeheartedly giving everybody the ability to do accessory apartments. So I, I can agree with that.
I'd like to keep the discussion open about, you said permitting, but I know you meant special permitting.
Well, I meant special permit versus...
But just think about if we just had guidelines for the building permit, that would, that it could be, get done, that could get done if it met all those guidelines, and didn't have to be a special permit. That's what we're trying to do. We're not saying you just, to build these anywhere. We're trying to set a set of rules, in an area, and a size, and a whole list of criteria that, that make it work. Because the special permit process is, I think that's what's stopping it from happening.
Yeah, it's the deed restriction that's stopping it from happening. 100%. Special permit's not the problem, it's the deed restriction, because you give up your rights forever. Once you do it, it's got to be affordable.
Well, it can be 15 years also. That's the minimum.
Well, let's keep talking about this issue, okay? Let's keep this open. And we'd like, what I'd like to do is, Brian, maybe listen to us a little bit more, draft this up one more time, and send it out to interested parties for comment. Is that, it didn't change much, just seven months.
Seems like you agreed on seven, that's good.
Yeah.
Sounds like you want to create maybe an overlay district.
Yeah.
Sounds like, still in the air on whether it's by right or a special permit. So maybe I'll try to split the difference, come up with something that shows a by right use in certain, under certain formulas. Where you're in a certain zone, you're in a certain sized lot, that makes you feel comfortable, and come back with that. This is always a public document, anyone wants a copy of it, we can send it out, but it is going to change. So if you want, I'll, I'll work on that a little bit, kind of update the, the folks that do, I'll try to contact the Amper's and Tootsberry folks, get copies of what they do, and then reinvent the wheel, and see if it's working well out there. Bring it back to the board, your considerations.
You think it's, next week is good, or do you think you need, do we, I'm just wondering with what we've got on the table. Do you think we have enough time to deal with it next week? We're not taking this time meeting, so we don't have, we just need to get it out there.
The warrant closes the first day of June.
Okay.
So if you want something for that time meeting, you really only have, we're going to have, you know, a hiatus for the holidays. You don't have a lot of time. So when we work on a formula-driven by right, I probably want to have an overlay district for you. Let me, let me work on a formula-driven by right on certain zoning districts.
One more question. I'm curious, Brian, why the, no towns from the Cape are listed here? Just didn't happen to?
I guess whoever put this together, the state, didn't use, I don't think the Brookshires...
Oh, I thought this was by staff.
No, no, we Googled that, and it came up, and someone did this in 2004, but they didn't include certain counties. Barnstable County wasn't included.
I'd be interested to know if there's any towns on the Cape that are dealing with the same kind of thing.
Yeah. I'll find out.
Start with it wide, come back in?
Yeah, just to like to remind the board that several years ago, we had an amnesty program for this, and we, and there was one, one applicant. I, I would like to know the mechanics of, if this is recommended, what happens to the people who received special permits previously, who were required to have the unit affordable? In other words, what, if we're going to change this, do we then put language in here that says that those people are released from their, their special permit requirements, so that they're not, so that they can't say, oh, you, you've changed the rules now, but you're going to hold me to the old rules? I, I, I need to know what the mechanics of that are, and so that it can be explained to those people, and to us, and to the public.
That's a good question. So what happens to an existing special permit of eighty units, if you make it then by right? Are they, are they then forgiven the condition?
Right. I'd like to, I'd like to know how we're going to, how we're going to deal with that.
That's a good question.
Way beyond my pay grade to figure that out.
That's a good question. Yeah, that would take more than a week. That's a great question that needs to be answered before you make a decision.
Right.
Ken? Thank you. Doug?
That amnesty, I think, still has another year to go. It was three years, and I think we're two years into it. And interestingly, that, I did one of those apartments, and when I looked into doing it on another apartment, I actually found that the amnesty program really is for units that have been in place 20 years. And you can have an apartment that's been in place for five or seven or whatever amount of years, you don't actually have to use that amnesty program. But there's still always been an allowance for being able to still go back and permit it, even though it's already existing. Say, if you've got a new owner that has a, a building that they've bought, and it has this accessory apartment that was built, maybe never permitted correctly, you can still bring it back and bring it into compliance, even without the amnesty. If it doesn't happen to be 20 years old, they're still happy to have them come down and go through the process, make sure the smoke alarms work, and that there's egress windows, and just bring it up to code and make it safe. So that was interesting to find out.
But does that mean if they, they have two units? That means if, I don't, I'm not clear on that.
If it's been existing more than five years, it could be possibly permitted, unless there's problems and issues with it that can't be resolved to make it meet code. Say, for instance, if it's in a basement, and there's no egress windows, it's never going to, well, it could be solved, but it could be more expensive than it's worth.
Window wall, yeah, huge wall instead.
So there is other options besides just the amnesty also.
Sounds like we've got some work in that area, too.
Do you have a, a local amnesty that we have?
Yeah, we still have the local amnesty for, that Mr. Clower brought forth two years ago. For the 20-year-old apartments that, that never met their requirements. But if you can meet some of the minimal requirements, you can still bring these other ones under the current code, which I found that to be interesting.
When you say current code, Doug, what, you mean current building code?
Yeah.
But our zoning says one unit, so that's why I'm missing something there.
But if something's existing more than five years...
I thought there was 10 years. I thought it was an illegal structure that didn't status for 10 years. I'm, I'm...
Well, maybe it is, but I thought it was five.
Well, let's look into that. Let's find out what that is. I'm not...
The case that I was looking into was probably more than 10?
I'm, I have limited knowledge on it, but I'm aware of one part of the bylaw that says if the structure, if it, if it has status, if it's been there for 10 years, but you can't modify it, you can't make it legal, you just can't make you tear it down and change it. It could be left alone. That's what my understanding, but let's look into it and find out. I, I, I think that's...
Never completed the process?
Right.
With the person, so.
We need to look into, understand that as well.
I have a very minor comment on number five. After reviewing it again, it says entrances must be screened, et cetera, et cetera, to reduce visual impact. I don't think we should be telling them how to do it. I think if you took out the phrase screened or, and just say entrances must be placed appropriately, et cetera, to reduce visual impact, I think it's more appropriate in a bylaw, rather than telling them what to do.
Well, they have their choice, though. Screened or...
Sorry?
They have their choice. Must be screened or placed appropriately.
I, I think the intention is here so when you drive down the street, it doesn't look like, you know, multi-family housing. The idea is to make it look like a single-family home. You really can't see anything different, because it's, the differences are screened or in the back.
Could be landscaped, it wouldn't necessarily have to be screened.
Well, that's what I think what they mean, Paul. Screening with landscaping or a fence, I think that's, I thought that was landscaping.
If you follow that line of reasoning, you would say landscape, screen, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm just saying, make it simple.
You think they're putting up screens, like metal screens?
Yeah, the definition of screen is landscaping or fencing.
Landscaping, fencing.
It could be a fence, too.
Right.
Well, that's, that's not landscaping, yeah. Well, fence is not landscaping, yeah.
I can look at it, Brian.
We can look at it. I understand what you're.
I don't think you should tell them how to do it, but.
All right, so if I can just tap for the board, you're down seven months. I'll look at some landscape language. Formula driven, look at a formula driven by right scenario. Look at some Kit Kat examples. It's just a question, what happens to existing special terms that have a condition for affordability? And do a little research on your local, because of local amnesty. So I'll work on the formula first, and then the overlay district, and then the grandfather exemption provisions.
Okay, everyone, we've given Brian enough to work on, and he'll bring it back when he can. Next item is general correspondence. Don't have anything. Future agenda items. This was a request to have future agenda items on the agenda?
I did ask you to put that on there. Every time.
Well, I have, I've asked Ken, Brian to do it, and.
He did.
Okay.
There it is. It's there.
I thought you had something hot here, Ralph.
I have nothing hot, but I'm one of, one of seven people.
Well, it's there. I myself think we've got a lot to work on the next few weeks. So I'm pretty happy with the future agenda items. They're getting backed up a little bit. Next item is next meeting, Tuesday, October 13th, 2015. And that completes the agenda for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, adjourned. Thank you.